Here.
Mrs. Fano?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Dino?
Here, ready, here or not here?
Here, not here, okay. Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Ms. Efferman?
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Here. Rise and pledge the lead. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the United States of America. We are a nation under God, united as one, with liberty and justice for all. Public reading.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law is an act to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. We record this with the provision of the Act of Montville Township Board of Education providing a public notice of this meeting, which included a time and date and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertising in the Daily Record of Boy and Soren's Official Newspaper on January 8, 2023.
Hey, we're going to have a ceremony for Mr. Rappaport?
Yes, Mr. Rappaport was not here when we did this earlier this month, so we will be doing his move box.
I, Mike Rappaport, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people. So help me God. I, Mike Rappaport, do solemnly swear that I possess the power to instruct and law for the office of members of the Board of Education and that I am qualified as a voter pursuant to RS 194 next month, and that I will faithfully and cautiously perform all the duties of an office according to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Okay, high school student Rappaport, Ms. Efferman, I guess Ms. Perici, time is right?
Yes, so my name is Jolie Amber. Sorry. Hello, my name is Jolie Amber. I'm the president of the Student Activities Council at Montville Township High School. Unfortunately, my counterpart, Anne Perici, who is the president of the 2023 senior class, has COVID and is unable to join us tonight, but he sends us hellos to everybody. So I'm here to talk about the four A's: arts, athletics, academics, and activities, and all the different things that we do at Montville High School. So from the past, from the last meeting that we were able to attend, the Junior Patriots Pen Competition, this year's theme was "My Pledge to Our Veterans," and Aral Malinti, a junior at MTHS, received the first-place award in the Voice of Democracy competition. Both boys' and girls' basketball teams rang in big wins against Morris Hills on December 21st, and girls won 57 to 33, as the boys won as well, a score of 56 to 53. We're very proud of our mistakes. On December 23rd, the pep rally went very smoothly, and everyone thought it was a great hit. We had fun activities, including the faculty game, Hungry Hungry Hippos game, and beautiful performances from the choir, orchestra, and band presented in the auditorium. Thanks to my team, SAC, the event was a smashing hit for student morale. The student faculty basketball games against the upperclassmen and underclassmen went very well. In a tough matchup, the teachers, cheatingly, won against the upperclassmen. Truthfully, they won the underclassmen game. On January 10th, MTHS hosted a student summit with student council representatives from across Morris and Sussex County, and this was an exciting opportunity for us as student council and Student Activities Council to network and brainstorm new and creative ideas to benefit our school. Winter Track has had a lot of top performers, including M. McLennan, senior, who tied the indoor school record in high jump at 5 foot 10 inches, and the sprint medley relay team qualified for nationals for the first time in Winter Track history as they head to Boston this year. This team includes seniors Ryan Kaiser and Connor Zilkowski, and sophomores Alex Ella and Chris Sosnowski. Congratulations to all of them. The international business practice firm Honors Class, headed by Mr. Connolly, went to Fairleigh Dickinson University earlier today to present the virtual company that they have created to business experts and to sell their products to other schools, and the trip was a great success. Congratulations to Curtis Wang for winning December's math competition, and we're looking forward to the end of senior year, and the yearbook cover has been selected, as well as maybe ad pages for the yearbook. The boys' basketball team is 2-6, but their record does not tell their full story. After losing a couple of hard-fought double-overtime games, including one early in the season to Morris Mill, the plan is to beat Morris Mills tonight at 7:00 PM. The girls' basketball team is off to a hot start at 8-2, including wins against very high-level opponents in Bayonne and Pope John. They look to continue this hot start at Morristown tonight at 7:00 PM. The hockey team is also off to a hot start at 8-2-2, tying in their most recent match to Nutley, led by their captains. They took, they look to take on Morris Catholic at 4:15 on Thursday. Bentley continues their dominance as they are 12-0 and play Roxbury on the 24th, and this team looks to go very far this year, as they do every year. Wrestling hosted their first wrestling quad on Saturday, and the team beat Sarerville, Canowat, and New Providence. Looking into the future, on January 24th, Always Connected, a parent presentation on social media, is scheduled at MTHS, and we look forward to educate, educate the people at Montville. Marking period two ends on February 1st, and the 8th grade orientation will be held Wednesday, February 8th, and the snow date is February 9th. The new midterm schedules have been released and will take place from Thursday, February 2nd to Wednesday, February 8th. Finally, MCHS FBLA will be hosting a business clothing drive for their community service project Dress for Success. The collection will be happening from January 23rd to January 30th, and all donations will be appreciated. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that report. We're actually going to strike from the record, the cheating part that you mentioned.
Dr. Orman?
So we have Hilldale coming up here, we have Hilldale's finest come on up here with this snare, explain, and give a little bit of room.
This is five of our representatives from student council to give you a little about what's been happening at Hilldale here.
Good evening. We are 5th grade Student Council students from Hilldale Elementary School. Our names are Sam.
Emma.
Lysakin.
And Aria.
We have been having a wonderful year at Hilldale and want to share some of the extraordinary things our school has brought to its spirit.
In October, Hilldale's Kindness Club collected socks for sock toes and donated them to those in need and in war. After Halloween, the students collected candy to distribute to those who couldn't have their drink. Donations went to the homeless and recipients.
Student council sold glow sticks to begin to raise money for a memorial tree in honor of a former Hilldale student. On World Kindness Day in November, the Kindness Club had a school guide dance to continue to raise money for this memorial tree.
On November 4th, 4th, parents, students, and teachers participated in an annual information, informative and interaction, duality celebration, which featured songs, dances, and a baton show. It was great, like, a great festival of events.
In November, students created an art project for a service person, which was a huge hit. Over 300 beautifully decorated pieces were sent to Operation Color a Smile to be distributed to veterans around the country.
Hilldale Student Council coordinated a drive-by food truck for the Montville Food Pantry. Students stood outside and cheered, greeting people with colorful signs and enthusiastic cheers, and they dropped off food for the less fortunate in our community. Hilldale was able to collect dozens of free slash hundreds of pounds of food for the food pantry.
In December, Hilldale collected over 170 toys for the annual Toys for Tots program. These toys were distributed to those in need in Morris County.
On Friday, 2nd, Friday, December 2nd, the Hilldale Student Council asked friends and family to participate in Homeless Solutions, a night in the cold. Participants were asked to spend the night outdoors on their bedroom floors or anywhere that was less comfortable than their own beds. This Morris County event raises crucial funds and awareness for homeless families and individuals in our community. There were about 40 Hilldale students who participated, and we were able to raise 595 dollars.
On December 19th, Hilldale participated in our annual academic school. Participants donated items that were needed for the Montville Animal Shelter. Students across K-5 showed their knowledge in a fun and competitive way.
Hilldale's fourth and fifth grade orchestra students performed a wonderful concert for the school community in December. Now the members of the orchestra are beginning to learn brand-new pieces of music, the Spring Concert.
Students enjoyed boarding the Polar Express on December 23rd, as we held our annual Polar Express day. It was great seeing all the smiley faces and a nice way to kick off winter break.
We have a lot of great activities planned for the rest of the school year. Chinese New Year, Social Emotional Learning Day, Global Day of Play, Read Across America, and Steam Day, just to name a few.
We look forward to all of the amazing activities planned for us to disclose. Thank you for the opportunity to come and share with the Montville community. Have a great night.
That was wonderful. Thank you, Hilldale, for sharing that. The Montville Community Service Corps really appreciate that. Give it to others, really important.
I refer to one of my children, Dr. Hilldale, as well, and it's so nice to see Hilldale come here and tell us about what's still going on, and it's great. Okay, now we have. So now we would like to present the Eagle Scout Project Commission to Christopher Sosnowski. Okay, if you go down there and read.
Chris here, or Chris?
So whereas Christopher Sosnowski is a resident of Montville, and whereas Christopher is attending Montville Township High School, and whereas Christopher has successfully completed all the requirements of Eagle rank, including surpassing the merit badge requirement by 30 badges, earning him two silver palms, and whereas Christopher's Eagle Scout project consisted of clearing the Orange Trail at the community park pavilion, installing a new map key by the high school pavilion, and building a walkover bridge at the end of the Orange Trail, thank you. In addition to, in addition to Boy Scouts, Christopher is the percussion section leader for the high school band, participates in marching band, winter track, and spring track, and volunteers his time as a member of each. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Montville Township Board of Education of Montville, New Jersey, that a duly authenticated copy of this resolution, signed and attested to by the president and vice president of the Board of Education of the Montville Township Public Schools, be presented to Christopher Sosnowski for the honor and distinction that he has brought to his family, school, and community in reaching the school Eagle Scout Board of Honor. Congratulations.
Great stuff going on this evening, and what here, what everybody's here for tonight, and I was recognizing our teachers and professionals of the year, so it's a great night to, especially during January, I know things are a little, you know, weather and everything, but such great sunshine, recognizing all of all these people. So we're going to do it by school. We're going to start with Cedar Hill. Dr. Raj, will you come up and introduce your recipients?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Raj, a principal at Cedar Hill School. I'd like to introduce our Teacher of the Year. Our Teacher of the Year has been in the district for 23 years, bald, which at Cedar Hill. For some of you who are on Board of Education, they know this person from the start of her career as a kindergarten aide, went back to school, and we're glad you did, Jordy Paul. Also now, our Educational Services Professional of the Year, this gentleman's been in the district for 26 years, been in multiple schools, came to Cedar Hill as a media specialist, went back into a classroom as a third-grade teacher for a number of years, and is now back in the media center, Mr. Joseph Palacio.
I'm going to bring both of them up at the same time. So our Teacher of the Year, Tammy Minsky, has been with us for, we couldn't really decide today, was it calendar year, school year, so let's say 24 years in Montville. Come on up, Tammy. I'm a primary teacher, 2nd grade, and as you all heard today, so many things with the Kindness Club, Tammy is one of our advisors of the Kindness Club. And our Education Services Professional is Serena Nesto. Serena, thank you. Professional at Hilldale. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dean, I'm the principal at William Mason. We're very excited to announce that our Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Navarro. Mrs. Navarro's been teaching for 27 years, I believe 21 here in Montville. She's been described by her colleagues as warm, kind, caring. I can personally tell you she spent several hours this summer on the playground, creating, designing, and eventually spesseling and coloring in multiple games and motivational quotes for our students, so we appreciate it, and once again, congratulations. William Mason is proud to announce that Kim Beermeister, actually known as Mrs. Bee, is our Educational Services Professional. Mrs. Bee has also been described as creative, kind, conscientious, and when I say the best speaker in the building, she's somewhat of a Martha Stewart, and we appreciate you and your service to our students. Congratulations.
Good evening. My name is Elise Melrath, supervisor of elementary education for the district, and I'm here to represent Mr. Esposito, who cannot be here tonight. He has provided me with something he'd like me to read, and I will do so. Woodmont proudly congratulates 2nd grade teacher Jane Man Crusoe as the 2022-2023 Teacher of the Year. A veteran of the Montville Township School District and Woodmont School, Jane began her career as a part-time basic skills instructor, then she transitioned as a full-time instructor with the 2nd grade. I have to read this part. When Jane decides to retire from teaching, she will have a second career as a detective. She loves solving the mystery behind a student's progress, which can certainly provide any police force with the same level of accuracy. Dedicated, energetic, and respected professional. Woodmont also proudly congratulates kindergarten aide Diane Coliacova as the 2022-2023 Educational Services Professional of the Year. Diane works collaboratively with kindergarten teacher Candice Santi Avvo, creating an atmosphere out of your favorite Dr. Seuss storybook. Diane has a long history with Woodmont. Her children attended Woodmont Elementary School, and Diane served in the PTA, including a term as PTA president. She never lost her Woodmont spirit, and she donates her time to create the spectacular autumn display that greets our visitors. Congratulations to Diane.
Congratulations to all of our recipients tonight, they're all such special people. I would like to introduce an extraordinary educator. She's been at Valley, too, Valley for 24 years, no matter what setting she's placed in, classroom, in the small group setting, she's extraordinary. So extraordinary that when teachers, students, and parents come back after a number of years, they always say, "Where's Mrs. Conti?" I wanted to say hello to Mrs. Conti. Mrs. Conti asserts as a gentleman teacher and is currently a basic skill teacher. We put our strongest teachers in with our academy students because they deserve supreme support. I discovered a secret about Mrs. Conti for years. I did the schedule at my kitchen table by myself. I discovered that Mrs. Conti has an innate ability to schedule. She's one of our teacher leaders, and along with her reading special, Stop and Try, she's been in and more self-to-me, and in strength level, and I can see a way to secret how to help me get fire tonight. But Mrs. Conti, thank you. She's a recently called a new friend, Mrs. Darren Conti. Another extraordinary professional is Mrs. Lily May. Lily May has been with us 20 years. I've put her in every grade level, the last 18 years of my tenure at Valley. No matter where I place Lily, kids benefit greatly. She makes them smile, she builds their confidence, she makes them work harder because she just inspires them. Lily has also inspired the staff. She's a co-chair of our sunshine committee. She plans to mentor faculty, make us laugh, make us a little tipsy sometimes. But first of all, make us valuable colleagues of each of us. I can't thank Lily May enough. She's an extraordinary professional, and we will all be happy with that, you know.
Good evening. I'm Mike Schirp, with Montville Township High School. Our Teacher of the Year unfortunately could not be here tonight because he is in Morristown coaching the aforementioned girls' varsity basketball team, as we said, Darren. Mr. Lynn has been in Montville for 18 years, with all at the Zaw, where he teaches French. He's also one of our grade leaders, and he was saying he couldn't be here tonight, but he thought you all were just there as a kickoff in Morristown, so that's Mr. Lynn. Our Educational Specialist of the Year is Mrs. Claudia Hyne. Would you come on up? Mrs. Claudia is a rock star. This is her second year in the media center. Those of you who've been on the board for a while, remember, we did a run with her a few years ago that changed our media center to a now beautiful place, but then COVID came, and we couldn't use it. In the two years that Claudia has been there, she has completely changed the media center to a place where every single period, kids want to go and be there, and they're taking out books. They're actually taking out books, which is substantial considering where we've come from, so we are grateful for Mrs. Hyne, everything she's done for the building, and the culture, and the kids, and the community in that large.
Good evening, folks. My name is Deb Sanford, I'm the high school principal. Before I introduce you to the three Educators of the Year from Montville Township High School, I'll ask everyone to give a big round of applause to the Educators of the Year from the six other schools. As I mentioned, at the high school, we recognize three Educators of the Year. We participate in Education Services Professional, the Teacher of the Year, but also we participate in the Princeton University Distinguished Secondary School Teaching Award, which recognizes which recognizes innovative teaching methods. Our recipient this year is Mrs. Maria Norg, who's been employed at Montville Township High School for 11 years. Prior to that, she began her teaching career in 2010, where she worked in a private special education school. Join me in congratulating Mrs. Norg. We'd like to recognize our Education Services Professional of the Year, who began her employment at Montville Township Public Schools in 2008, first as a teacher, until then in 2016, she became a Student Assistance Counselor. She taught three years prior to coming to Montville Township Public Schools. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Catherine Lamar. And finally, we'll be recognizing our Teacher of the Year. She's been employed at Montville Township High School for eight years. Prior to that, she began her teaching career a couple of years before that, teaching in both Morris Hills and Morris Plains School Districts. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Sandra Mailer. Okay, I'm sorry. She wants all of us to be up there with one clear picture. All right, thank you. So Dr. Grit was here last year doing a presentation of statistical forecasting for the district and the teacher enrollments. After looking at the data again and the effects of COVID, we asked him to come back, update some of those numbers, and he's here to present tonight for what the teacher of the district is going to have to hold in place over the next five years. Dr. Grit?
Thank you, Dr. Gorman. This is the point everybody would like, but this is usually what happens when I present this presentation, they all leave.
They do watch every video, though, so.
Sure. So tonight's presentation will be brief, because last year, if you recall, how many board members did we have here last year? Just show hands. Okay, so most of you were here for last year. This is more or less a brief update, doing our own projection analysis. We didn't really go into the depth that we did last year, if it really wasn't necessary. So it'll probably take about 15 minutes. I'll just go through that, and if you have any questions, we'll discuss it at the end of the presentation. So just again, a little brief history about our company. It was formed about 25 years ago, actually, now. We just do this type of work, which is school demographic studies for school districts, mostly in New York and Jersey metropolitan area, but we expanded down to Virginia and all the way up to where I live, Vermont, and places in between. So we've done about 200 school districts in the metropolitan area. We are also the consultant in New York City Public Schools since 2006. We're all there at demographics, which as you can imagine is fairly interesting. So I'm the executive director, and I have a doctorate from Rutgers University in Ed Stats and Measurement, which is mostly folks that wind up working with college board, and I've decided to go into a more practical approach, which is this. I still present nationally on this and love to write peer review journals, which is just a state part of the research in the field. And I testify as an expert witness in school demography, ALJ, here, and the school districts are on divorce from each other.
Could you just pick up the mic, Doc?
Sure. Be a little louder?
Oh, there we go.
So tonight's purpose is really, of course, projecting enrollments, right? And we're going to look at the next five years as our projection period. We don't go beyond five years, mostly because we would then have to start projecting kids who have not been born yet, which is a fairly difficult task for a community such as your size. Next, we looked at historical enrollment patterns over time over the last decade. Looked at it not only district-wide, but elementary, middle, and high, as well as at the school level. Contacted the local planning department to find out all the new housing that is going on in township and how that could affect your enrollments. Looked at your building capacities and tried to figure out whether you have surplus seating or inadequate seating based upon the current enrollments and projected enrollments. And this is, like Dr. Gorman said just a moment ago, this is an update to a demographic study that we did December '21, so just a little over a year ago. So again, here's the township map showing all the schools, the main artery roads that kind of cut through the township, 82 and 7. This is showing the elementary attendance areas, and you may or may not be able to see that very clearly, but there's a little pocket, I believe, some Hilldale students down in the Woodmont section, if I've got that right, that 10. It looks like they're surrounded by all the students in that one particular zone, but that is correct. There's an apartment complex down there. So just going over the enrollment trends, this is really kind of interesting. So I've been working for your district probably since 2016. And actually, I started teaching here in 1992, was my first year, so I really feel old listening to some of these people tonight and their experience of talking here 31 years ago. So in October 15, 2022, which is just this past October, you reported your enrollments to the state of New Jersey, and your enrollment was about 3421, that half students are shared, one student. But your enrollment prior to this year had just been declining for more than a decade. I believe it's been actually about 12 years. And so, as you can see in that second bullet, enrollment's have been declining up until this year, where then it had a reversal trend and gained about 55 students this current year, first time in many, many years we've seen a gain. If we go back 10 years, you were just shy of 3,975 students, so a loss of 550-plus students over the last decade, which is pretty substantial. And we use something called the cohort survival ratio method to project enrollments five years out. We'll talk about that in a moment. But this is showing your enrollment over time. You can see that big decline that I was talking about, and also how the, at the last year, you can see there is an increase in enrollment. What's interesting is the next slide, this slide, which is showing in the last decade your elementary, middle, and high school enrollments. So the elementary is up at the top, and you can see that it's been declining up through the 2020-21 school year, and there's been a gain in enrollment in the last, not just one year, but two years, of approximately 124 students. That's interesting, because when you start seeing that elementary enrollment change, either going up or going down, that's actually going to flow through the system at some point. So it's kind of a precursor telling me, and you, that at some point in time, you're going to see enrollment growth due to that change right there. You can see that the middle school, which is the bottom line, has really been declining over time. Over the last 10 years, they've lost over 250 students, whereas the high school has also been losing students. Up until this year, they also had their first student, but they've lost over about 200 students over the last decade. So this method, the cohort survival ratio method, is a projection methodology that's been actually around for almost 100 years, and it's the methodology that the DOE, Trenton, accepts as the acceptable methodology. And what we really do is we look at the survival rate patterns, or what we call grade progression ratios, of one grade level to the next over time. We look at it over a 10-year period, actually. So I'll give you a simple example up there. If you have 100 first graders in the 2021 year that advance to 95 second graders the following year, which would be this year, that's a survival rate of 95 divided by 100, or 0.95. So we have these progressions for all the grades, from birth to kindergarten, all the way up to 11 to 12, and that's 13 grade progressions. So if the ratios are above 1, it basically means that you're gaining students due to inward migration. And if it's below 1, you're losing students due to outward migration. So when we look at your ratios over time, we take an average, because we can always have anomalies in one year or another. So by doing that, smoothes out any kind of unusual things that are going on. So of the 13 ratios, eight in the five-year average were above 1. So you have a general net inward migration of students coming into the district, but all the ratios in the elementary grades, K to 5, were above 1. So you have inward migration in the elementary grades. The ones that were below 1 were in the middle and high school, probably students who are leaving to go to private middle schools or private high schools. But what was interesting to me, in the most current year, the 22-23 school year, you had three survival ratios that were the highest in the last decade. So something interesting is going on here, and I'll talk a little more about that in a moment. So we use these average ratios, we apply them to the most current enrollment to project your enrollment five years out. One of the key things that we look at are birth counts, which are used to project kindergarten students five years later. When I started first working for your district six, seven years ago, births were declining. And because of the decline in birth count, it affected your kindergarten count, obviously, five years later, because you had fewer kids coming into the district as kindergarten students. But in the last 10 years, there's been a stabilization that has happened, except for the 2017 year. You can see this diagram right here. You can see the decline I'm talking about in the early part. This is back in 2008, how it was going down. But if you just think out that one little 137 birth count in the 2017 year, it's pretty stable over the last decade, which is helping stabilize enrollments. So this is one of the things I want you to know tonight, is that when we look at the number of births in the township, let's the second column. The third column is how many students are born five years later. And the last column is the survival ratio from birth to kindergarten, which is basically column three divided by column two, which they're all above 1. And they're not just a little bit above 1, they're significantly above 1, indicating to me that a lot of parents are moving into the community with kids that were born from other communities so they could come to school here. But the last year was off the charts in terms of a ratio from birth to kindergarten. It was 1.832. You haven't seen anything like that over the last 15 years. Why? You know, I talked to Dr. Gorman about this. The pandemic has really been an unusual thing, not only statewide, nationally. It's changed a lot of people's patterns in terms of where parents could work because of remote work, where they can live now. We'll talk about that in a moment. But I don't know for certain why that ratio is as high as it is. But even if you take out this past year, and you can take a look, you have a 1.3, a 1.3, and a 1.5. They're pretty high still. And if you go back beyond that, all the way up, they were more in the 1.1s and the 1.2s. So you're having more inward migration regardless of the pandemic. But I think there's some exacerbated factors with the pandemic, people wanting to move here. So one of the things we did to project enrollments, we projected it at a school level. So to project enrollments at the school level, we have to figure out how many births have occurred in each of the kindergarten, or the elementary attendance areas. So we get birth data from the state of New Jersey at the census block level, and then we have a GIS analyst on the board who basically takes that block data and is able to figure out how many births are associated with each attendance area. And in the five elementary attendance areas, you can see that if we aggregate the births over time, the Hilldale areas had the most, and the Valley View attendance areas had the least. There is an unknown column on the far right, which basically means we know that a Montville mother had a birth, but we don't know specifically her address, so we can't assign it to a specific attendance area. So we wind up, for the purposes of the projections, distributing them proportionally back to other attendance areas. So this is an important slide, is that there is a lot of new housing planned in the township. Nearly, almost 1,000 housing units, if we want to round it up a little bit, of non-age-restricted housing units. They're all multifamily, I shouldn't say all, most of them are multifamily units, which are typically yielding students of a lower amount than a deep-packed, single-family home. So keep that in mind, that works to your advantage. But of the number of units, 16%, 149, that is, are affordable housing units as part of the settlement agreement the township has with the Fair Share Housing Center. They have to put together a number of, or give a number of affordable housing units, so it's 149. Of all the attendance areas, we mapped where those developments are. The largest impact would be on the Woodmont Elementary School, which would have about 69% of the new housing units. So when we calculate how many children we can expect, we use some multipliers, that's the terminology we use, based upon the number of children that are typically in your township in apartments and townhouses. That was in the previous study in 2021. And we came out with a number of 385 additional children are estimated from the developments. It's a rough estimate, because we have to make some assumptions about the bedroom distributions of the developments coming on board, because the market-rate apartments and townhouses, they were not available, those bedroom distributions. But we're pretty sure it'll be pretty close to that number of 385. So we took the baseline enrollment projections and modified them to account for these new housing developments. And here's what we get. We projected the enrollments at the individual school level for the next five years. We created two sets of projections. One, you'll hear me refer to as baseline. Baseline means what are the enrollment projections assuming that the housing developments don't come online at the timeline that we estimate, and don't happen at all, let's just say it didn't happen, okay? The other one is what we call adjusted for housing growth, which puts in those children I was just talking about into the schools to give you an idea of what it would look like five years out. We made a lot of assumptions, assumptions of when the buildings would be, the construction would be done. Then we have to take the number of children that we estimate in an elementary school. We have to divide it equally among the grades. There's a lot of estimating that goes on. But to make a long story short, the baseline projections are projecting a gain of about 79 students in the next five years. Your enrollment would be roughly around 3,500. But if we factor in all the new housing, we're taking a look at a gain of almost 390 students in the next five years. A big difference. Those are the projections. I'm not going to go through that, because obviously it's very small. But I highlighted the elementary, middle, and high in the title in the red, so if you can see it on your PowerPoint, you'll look further on later on. But this next slide summarizes it. So the elementary configuration, there's two numbers up there, 190 and 319. 190 is the projected gain for the baseline, and 319 is the projected gain for the adjustment. And that's the same pattern that you see all the way down through middle and high. But notice, while the middle school is projecting a gain, the high school is still projecting a decline. And the reason that is, is because the smaller cohorts that you currently have in the system have to finally work their way out, and that means from the middle and the elementary schools. And that takes time. So it's the same process I showed you earlier tonight, when I showed you that there's increasing enrollment at the elementary level. It will take time, get those students through the system, so you start seeing an increase. All right, this might be a slide that people want to talk about tonight, but I'm going to try to help you out with this as best as I can. So this is showing all the schools in the district, their capacity as of the 2020 year. Actually, it was just done recently, I believe. The current enrollment in each school and the projected enrollment. Now remember, I did two sets of projections, adjusted and baseline. So the projected enrollment you see are the higher projections, the adjusted projections, to show a worst-case scenario, what it would look like. All the values in red are showing what's called unheld students. That's basically saying inadequate seating. And what I have to explain to you is that the capacity values of each of the buildings on the far left are not a hard and fast number. It's not a fire code number. So for instance, for Cedar Hill, it says capacity at 305. It's not like the fire department said you cannot have more than 305 students. This is based upon how you're currently using the building, according to board policy. In other words, how many students do you educate in a regular ed classroom if your board policy says 20, and you have, you know, 20 regular classrooms? The math is fairly simple, 20 times 20 is 400. But if you start having small group instruction, for say, English as a second language, or for special ed, you can't have those 20 kids in a small group instruction classroom. It changes how you're using the facility, and at one It changes how you're using the facility and it lowers the capacity. So again, depending upon how you're using, large, small group instruction means you're going to lower the capacity. If you take a lot of those classes out and fill them with general ed, you're going to raise the capacity, it can really vary. But notice that currently, all five elementary buildings are in the red, which means they're over capacity according to the state. It's probably tight in each one of those buildings. And with the increase in enrollment projected, particularly due to all this new housing development, it's only going to exacerbate the problem at each of these schools in the next five years. You can see the numbers across the board of each of those elementary schools are showing unhoused students. So that's, again, fancy word. Lazard currently has a surplus, but due to this increasing enrollment projected at the middle school, that's also projected to be a situation where it's inadequate seating. But due to the continued decline in enrollment at high school, projected to actually have a surplus at the end of the five-year period. So COVID has, like I mentioned, the asset has really had a big, big effect on my projections, my colleagues' projections. We don't have a crystal ball with us, even though the federal people tell us COVID over, the effects of COVID are not. Things are happening in the real estate market continually. And one of the things we see where I live is, for the first time in years, an enrollment increase. We had brain drain for the last 20 some odd years. We actually had enrollment increases because of people moving up from this area, Connecticut, New York City. But you can see in the third bullet, some of the big declines that some school districts have had across the country, wherever, in New York. I think their decline was something like 50,000 after the first year of the pandemic. But the big question is, are people going to continue living in these places they bought? Up in the rural sticks where I live? Are they going to stay there, or are they going to come back here? I don't know. I think a lot of it has to do with people, if they're going to actually have to come back to the office someday, which I don't really know if that's going to happen or not. But if parents have to be in a particular location, their kids are going to go with them. And that's really an issue that I think we're all going to be grappling with in the future. But I wanted to show you this map. So April 2020 is right around when the pandemic started. And this is showing a map in the first 15 months thereafter of where the population shifts were. And you can see on this map, the reds, the magentis are the biggest decliners, and the greens are the biggest gainers. So the western states like Idaho and Nevada, they gained a lot of people. And you can see that the heartland and even in some northeast are some decliners. So let's take a look at New Jersey and see what happened. The Turpite Belt, as I like to refer, the I-95 belt, the urban core, is where the biggest decliners were, all those dark grays and blacks. Morris County only had a small gain of about 5,000 people, less than actually. So it's really not that much. But the big gainer was Ocean County, I think. And that's the one in y'all. And if you want my opinion, from what I've heard, at least anecdotally, I guess where a lot of people went, were shore homes, and they stayed down there. Because now they didn't have to commute to their jobs. They had a secondary home, and now they can permanently live there. So just to summarize what we talked about tonight, enrollments, PK to 12 were projected to increase over the next five years, predominantly due to these 1,000 new housing units. But the enrollment gain that we talked about is not projected to be uniform across the three grade configurations. Elementary and the middle school is where the lion's share of the gain will be. And the decline is actually projected at the high school as these existing smaller cohorts rise through the system. So with that, I will turn it back to Dr. Gorman and see if anybody on the board would like to ask me any questions.
Thank you so much, but I appreciate that. I do know there's some questions, and that was very thorough. Yeah. First of all, thank you for the presentation. I'm just wondering about some of the numbers. And I totally understand what you said before about it takes time for things to go through the system, that, yeah, but increase of the czar tomorrow doesn't mean there are have increase of the high school tomorrow. But I'm looking at those czar, it increases every single year from 2023, sorry, 2020 to 2027, 2028. And by the time you get to 2027 and 2028, you've already seen the benefits of those bigger classes at czar even here at the elementary school. So why is the high school still going down, 2027, 2028?
Well, I'd have to look and see, like, grade by grade. But it's still, I still believe that some of the smaller grade levels moving through. I'd have to actually look at that case by case. But part of it is also the outward migration that the high school is experiencing. You look at the survival ratios that I mentioned in the early part of their core, that's the one part of the school district that does not gain students due to inward migration. So if you just take a look on the diagonals, if you're on the same slide that I'm on, take a look at the, for instance, the 10th grade in 23, 24, the baseline you see is 281. So it's continually declining down, 281, then becomes 278 in the 11th grade, 277, 12, because of the outward migration of students at those particular levels. But you can also see that the number of students coming in to the high school are much lower than what's leaving the high school. So you have, so for instance, in 23, you have 259 seniors. The next year, you're replacing them with 203 freshmen. So you need quite a few number of students to balance out the equation to keep that even. So you do have smaller cohorts still moving up from the middle school level. Are you seeing what I'm showing?
Yeah. I'm seeing it, just, I got to give a little time to analyze that little part here. We get the chart already, because we know some of these things, but let's see. Just also, the four elementary schools, besides Woodmont, they're all increasing every year. What are you seeing at Woodmont that makes you think, that it had a decrease in these last two years?
Yeah, so each one of the schools definitely has their own survival rate patterns. It's mostly just the birth rates that are driving those enrollments. So I think in the full report that I showed, let's take a look at some of the births. So if you take a look at Woodmont, for instance, in 2008, they had the upper 50s in births and more currently in the lower 30s. So you know, that's part of the issue there. Valley View would be something where they don't have too many births to help drive the enrollment either. One thing that's helping to increase births, uh, sorry, increase enrollments in Hilldale is if you take a look in 2021, there were 47 births. And you go back to 2008, there were 23 births or two. So there, some places, there's pockets where you've got more people having births, and other places it's not. So a lot of it's drawn, driven by this form of chart right here. In fact, in the report, this is the presentation, the report actually shows you the decliners and gainers in each elementary attendance area for births. Most of them haven't changed drastically over the last 13 years. But Woodmont definitely has changed as well as Hilldale. Those were two big, two big changes.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your report, nice to see you.
Oh, remember that, I'm sorry.
And forgive me, I had a lot of questions prior to coming, so if you don't mind, thank you. So I used to be on the planning board, so I know a little bit about what's happening in Montville. So large, high-density, multifamily developments appear to be less attractive to families. I think you've said that also to us before. Historically, data shows that families with kids don't often live in apartments. When you do the capacity enrollment, how does this affect your projection?
So in the 2021 report, we computed what's called student yields for all the different townhouses in the development, in the community, as well as apartments. Now, you don't have that many apartments. The biggest one you have is Rachel Gardens. So we use that as an estimator of what will come in a lot of these apartments in the future. But that's not really indicative of affordable housing. You really don't have a heck of a lot of affordable housing. So we use state multipliers. I actually wrote some in depth. So Rachel Gardens, this is actual data for your community, is 0.340 children per housing unit, about a third of child per housing unit. That contrasts heavily with a detached single-family home here, which is 0.91. Okay, so if we had a lot of detached single-family homes, that would be a different story. The average townhouse in this community is .264, which is a little bit lower than the Rachel Gardens. So those were the values that I was using to make the assumptions for the market rate units for both townhouses and apartments. Affordable units, like I said, didn't have to be. So I used what's called the statewide multipliers from Rutgers University's Center for Urban Policy Research. A one-bedroom unit affordable is .088. A two-bedroom unit is .408. And a three-bedroom unit is 1.087. So these are based on statewide multipliers. Is it going to be indicative of what's happening in Montville? Can't say, but that's our best estimate based upon what we've got from data. It's a good estimate going forward.
So with affordable housing, from my understanding, is that the family, even a single mom with a daughter, can't rent a one-bedroom. She'd have to rent a two-bedroom. So I don't see affordable housing as, well, your family would be in a one-bedroom affordable housing unit. And if there's a boy and a girl and a single mom, that mom would have to rent a three-bedroom. They're not allowed to share. So was, is, I just wanted to make a point of that.
Yeah, that's a good point. So the data that I gave you, those three bedrooms, 1, 2, 2, 3s, that's actually done on analysis from PUMS data, if you're familiar with that. That's from the American Community Survey. So the people at Rutgers take a look at this gigantic database of affordable housing and see that are actually separated out by bedrooms, and that's where it comes from. But a lot of that, that's why that one-bedroom value I said, .088, is next to nothing, zero homes, because some of the restrictions that are placed on some particular bed accounts.
That was definitely nothing. So then my next question is, the children that have enrolled in our district, immigrated into Montville, are these students living in freestanding homes or apartments?
Are they living in, freestanding being detached single-family?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Uh, well, that's not something that we really dove into to see exactly who, specifically where they're coming from. So we look at your students all the same, not where they came from prior. I don't have data on that, to be honest.
I would just think that's important, because if they're moving into single-family homes, and that's where we get the most of our population, there's a huge emphasis on these apartments. And if those students are not coming from those apartments, I would just think that's an important consideration for us. You know, that to me is important. So another thing I wanted to ask about, I know you mentioned 149 affordable housing to meet affordable housing obligations. I wanted to ask a question, if the single-family homes, oh, did you find out if we have any single-family homes that are being built?
Yes, yes, it is in the report. I don't know why I'm not advanced on this, or... Yes, so they're on the report. And the, actually, when I look at the top four, I can just rattle these off in case you don't have the whole report with you. So Avalon Bay is 349 units. Mill Creek, which is also called Montville 340, Chainbridge is 295 units. Sterling, Montville, 178, and something called the Jubay Room, 7.
Right, but those are not houses, those are the apartments.
That's right.
Who purchased. So my next question is with the affordable housing. Generally, what I think is with affordable housing, I know friends who got divorced, and they just moved from their home to an affordable housing community. So there was no immigration into Montville, they stayed in their schools. So I'm just wondering, is that a consideration as well? Because I think it gives first dibs to Montville township residents for affordable housing. If I, I might be wrong, but...
No, they don't, if there's just a general place.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know that, that's true. It could be coming from within, but from, at least what I knew from Morris County, I think it shows up in the Morris County Registry. I think there's an application process, I'm not positive about that. But you could have people transferring within the community, sure, that's definitely a possibility.
As a follow-up, I want to make sure I understand this. When you did the population for these new apartment, you know, housing thing, it sounded to me like for the 1 and 2 bedroom, you could very low ratio. Where we're talking about an empty population is really like the 3 bedroom units. So that's kind of, you know, more realistic that you would see families coming, right? And that's what's driving the number more, and I just want to make sure I understand that.
Pretty much. So here's what we do know from the township. So they did tell us the exact number of affordable units. In my experience doing this on teen years, there's a ratio, it's 20% 1s, 60% 2s, and 20% 3s. That's generally the format I see across the state. So that's the assumption that I use for the affordable housing units and what their bed distribution would be. Now, 60% 2s is still significant, because you have roughly about .4 children per housing unit. And 20% 3s, of course, is a big driver as well. The 1s aren't really giving much. But that's the distribution, and they're pretty much right on, right spot on. Every community is the same distribution.
And then if you have that, people's moving into the, there then could be new people moving into the single-family dwellings. Would it be more likely to be families with children? Thank you.
You're welcome. Tom?
In the capacity section, you mentioned that some of it was board policy determining how classing recite, and then you mentioned it was state, some of the states that, which is it, or is it some combination?
Okay, it's terminology that I was saying about states. So the state comes up with a definition of whether you have surplus seating or they call it unhoused students, that's the fancy word, whether you have inadequate seating. Now, for instance, in Cedar Hill, as shown right here, it's minus 23. It doesn't mean you have 23 kids sitting out in the hallway. It just means the way you're using this building, it's probably tight, because you designed it so you're going to have X number of children by board policy in a particular classroom. And like I said before, small group instruction really changed the capacity, because you cannot have as many children in that, as a regular classroom.
Thank you, but I guess my question is more specific. Is the number a variable based on board policy, or is it based on state guidelines?
So your board worked with an architect. And that architect came up with these capacity values based upon your board policy. Now, there is another way of compute capacity. It's called FES Recommended Class Size. It's from Facility Efficiency Standards, another state policy, where it says that for specific elementary, middle, or high, this is how many children we recommend. I did not use that capacity in this study. I used something called district practices capacity, which is, again, how you use building. But your architect would be the one who really knows how these values are computed. I'm more of a less the messaging here, because this was from your long-range facility board.
And we use something opposed to the district, there are lines that you guess?
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, that's what ends up happening is, it's an application of two things. So if you take a regular classroom, and it's a regular ed classroom, then it would be board policy determining how many students could potentially be placed in that particular room. So that's one policy. The other policy that is affecting us is how many students can be placed in a special education, for example. So if that same room is now going to be used for special ed, then that is not really our policy of Montville Township. It's the policy that's been set by the Department of Education as to an appropriate environment for those students. And when you get into classes like special ed, basic skills, or... And when you get into classes like special ed, or basic skills, or English language learners, all of those are situations where your capacities are going to be much lower due to the fact that those students need more one-on-one interactions, or smaller class-sized interactions, than your normal standard classroom. But when you look at that classroom and it's being used for those uses, the capacity for that particular classroom is going to be lower. From the perspective that the architects did is they walked through Cedar Hill. They evaluated how many classrooms were regular ed classrooms, how many classrooms were special ed classrooms for basic skills or ELLs, how many were being used for pull-out programs, and for students who needed additional assistance. And for each of those different classrooms, they then assessed what, how many kids are normally in those classrooms. Add them all up, and that's how you come up with 305.
Thank you for that help.
Yeah, no, I figured it was some combination or, but we've got a couple more. You said you made some assumptions on the dates of completions for each of them. What were those?
Um, so in the report, based upon if something was under construction, I would say, okay, it's going to be built and occupied in the next two years if it was approved, but not under construction, I might wait until 2024 before occupancy, something like that. So those dates that I used are actually in the report of what years I assume. Those based upon approval or whether it's under construction or not, again, estimated.
And then, well, you mentioned that was the anomaly, the 1.8 migration.
Mm-hmm.
And I noticed it was in the 2017 column. Does that represent a total migration of all K through five?
No.
Excuse me, not K through five, zero, pre-K kids, so they're age zero to age five?
So, right, so the 2017, there were 137 births in 2017. Now, five years later is September 22, people who came in as kindergarten, since there's your 251. So you gained, assuming those 137 kids that were born here didn't go anywhere, you gained 114 kids over that five-year period. And it's just obvious to me is that people are moving in with kids under the age of five, and that's why your 251 number is going down.
And so that, that will, we need, in your professional opinion, is that a realistic number to continue?
Definitely not.
2018, 2019, 2020, because even with the COVID and people moving back in, why not? I think maybe it would go up.
That, well, if it does go to 1.8, well, first of all, it's so rare to see. There's only one or two districts in the state that I can tell you that I can approach too, and they're consistent. And actually, there's one I work with in New York, Westchester County, Starsdale approaches three. And the rule of thumb is, the better the school district in the perception of the public, the higher that number's going to be. So, again, testament to you, but I don't think that number is going to be sustainable. And if it is, then your enrollments are even maybe way higher than what I'm showing. I did not use, I use ratios that, I did not use that ratio or weighted way less. So I'm looking more or less at the last three years prior as a good expectation.
Yeah, that's my concern.
I mean, you could argue the 1.8 or something like that in the future. But to roll that number of 1.8 for the next five years, you're going to see a crazy number going forward. And in my expectation, you're just not going to see that. Any other questions over here? Hey, Karen?
Kind of a simple question, and I'm, I'm good at math. I'm awful at statistics. What I'm hearing you say in your professional judgment, based on the data that's gathered and other sources, we can expect between 385 and 390 additional children from the new development that is currently on boats and are being built. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. I'm sorry. Two developments have not even, they have not broken ground. You're including them.
That's correct.
They may not break ground.
That's correct.
With interest rates how crazy they are at 7%, and it's very possible they were financing everything. If that's the case, what then would our numbers be?
Well, that's why I did two sets of projections, because I wanted to tell you that we have to, you know, we have to assume a couple things. If we're going to do adjusted, we're going to have to assume the worst-case scenario, and that's exactly what I've done for that one. The other one's the reverse, the baseline, which is saying none of these things are going to come forward. So you're asking really what would happen if one or this one, I didn't do specifically that. It would be somewhere in between. That's all I can tell you. Any other questions?
Right now, right now, she has a question. Right now, they're in the, they might not have broken ground yet, these developments. And you're going to tell us that in five plus years, there's a potential of these kids coming out of those, between.
Correct.
We need to go out for a referendum in September, and then find out two, three years later, if they break the ground up on wherever. We're going to be really short sighted. So it's, I guess it's a, some people may think we're not going to build up it. How are things jumping already and back up there? They'll break one, I think we are. We have to go by what experts say or administration says. Because the last thing we should do is to say, we want to build X, and then we get Y coming in, and we just want to know what we're, what we're on. And we, I would think that that's, that's, it's just my, moving to special one more, and completely one for presentation.
And then trying to ask just one more question. So you gave us an upper limit of like 390, 385, 390. Just as a statistical issue, what's the standard error on that? What's the range of possibilities? I mean, could it be worse? Could it be much nicer?
Well, you know, we look five years out, the error that we say statistically would be good, if I did a good job, is 1% error per year, so 5% going out. So, you know, 5% on either way of that is over 167 students, so that's a lot. But, you know, that's why, you know, typically, in a situation such as yours, I tell districts, look, you have to really keep an eye on the ball on those housing developments because that can change everything in here very quickly, especially if they don't come to fruition. But, you know, for future planning purposes, you need to have an idea of what the potential impact could be of all these going forward. That's the hard part here. You've got a lot of housing. You can see the variation between the baseline and the adjusted, that sits over 300 something students. But that's based on, right today, in January 2023, what I know for the housing developments in the community. So that's what I'm going with. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions?
Just a comment, David, that unfortunately, Dr. Rick, you know well, we don't have the luxury of waiting to see which way these trends are going to go.
Sure.
Because if you were correct at 385, that's a problem for us that we need to begin to address now.
Well, you know, not to be the bearer of bad news, but looking at that chart where you have, forget about projections. Right now, you have situations in each elementary school, situations meaning inadequacy. So it's not going to get better. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Thank you. Goodbody. This is the community's report?
So on that note, I think we probably need some more time to digest this information and discuss where we go from here. I am going to propose that we adjust our meeting schedules in order that we carve out time to spend just discussing what we're going to do, what this information means to us. And I'm going to suggest that the meeting on the 7th of February and the 7th of March, as well as the 11th of April, be spent discussing the impact of this study and how this study then projects out into other decisions. Which would mean then that we would hold our regular business board meeting at a second and separate meeting each of those months, which would mean that we would need to add the 21st of February onto our calendar. I'm going to, on a separate complete and total discussion that's different from this, we need to move the March 21st meeting to the 14th because of the budget calendar. The, we have to submit our budget for the 23, 24 year by the 20th of March, and our meeting was going to be the next day. So if that works, I'd like to switch the 21st of March to the 14th of March. And then our plan was the April meeting, the second meeting, was the 25th of April, and that would be the public hearing on the budget. So the 7th of February, the 7th of March, the 11th of April, we would discuss referendum. The 21st of February, the 14th of March, and the 25th would be our normal business meetings, at which time we would also be discussing different portions of the budget, depending on what time for this. Yes, good.
Does anyone have a, has a question about that?
I do. April 11, I will leave away. Am I allowed to be on a phone conference, Steve?
Yes.
Thank you.
Here are the rules. Anybody who gives sufficiently good notes can participate. But I'm assuming that the technology will let you hear everybody, everybody can hear you. Not what you can't do, you, a board member can't do, you just come in for a vote and then leave. Can you come in, hear it?
And just a, March 21st, there's no meeting on March 21st, well, that's phenomenal.
Oh, okay, then that works. Um, the other thing that I would also preemptively like to move forward, only so I can get them lined up, is I would like to, we did not approve a bond council at our reorganization meeting. I'd like to move forward with using the same firm, but bringing forward some new councils for you to consider. And then also the finance team, both of those elements, if we possibly are going to move towards referendum, I need to get them moving so that they're ready for you when you're ready. Um, so if that is okay to go ahead and move forward, I'm not committing us to anything. I'm just reaching out and talking to people.
I, reaching out and talking to people is fine right now. Nothing's been proposed. Uh, I would ask though, is everyone agreeing with the meetings?
Yes.
Then I'd like to add into the agenda, please. And then I'd like to also have a motion on that, as well as the agenda. I was chief, who, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, committee reports, let's see. I apologize. Okay. Let's come back to committee reports. Okay, uh, finance facilities, Karen?
So we met right before tonight's meeting. So we just continued along talking about the long-range facility plan, and we are going to begin our budget process soon.
Okay, curriculum, Michelle?
No, no.
Okay, policy, Joe? Communications, Mike Hall?
No.
And safety, Mark Drappel?
No.
Okay, Noah Fox? Uh, we have daily to visit the school boards. Karen?
Uh, so the executive committee met on last Tuesday. There's a board director's meeting on 27. Mandated training has begun for new board members, as well as re-elected board members. Uh, new board members will have weekend, a weekend training, the first weekend in February. For re-elected board members, there are live virtual evening trainings on February 27, March 23, and June 7. Just to update you on some things that are happening at the State House, the governor has signed a bill which eliminates the ETPA, which was a performance-based assessment for T, the students becoming teachers. It's been eliminated, however. The governor vetoed an amendment which transfers the authority to have a performance assessment to the educated preparation programs. So that was important to keep in, performance assessment, which is a mistake at ETPA. So as you may or may not know, a new law, school mapping data, requires four education and chief school administrators to submit critical incident mapping data to local law enforcement. There was concern at the JSVA about how much that would cost. On August 20th, the governor announced and then assigned them to, or given a directive that there will be $6.5 million in federal ARC funds to help alleviate any costs associated with that. There are some bills that are moving along, for example, to address staffing shortages. There's a teacher advertising campaign, which has been funded with about a million dollars. There's educators fellowship program. The commissioner is going to perhaps submit to the Department of Education, burning laws reports. There's a new security task force, Watts going on at the State House.
Yes, there, okay, Morris County's school board?
The next meeting is a virtual meeting on January 25th at 7:00 PM. So we have it. You can register now. And so I'm also Charlie on the agenda to present at that meeting as well, so, no?
Yeah, I was asked for Charlie. I know nothing about it. Nobody called out.
Not on the agenda.
So, correct, there's all. Okay, Morris County Educational Services, Joe?
Yes, we had a meeting Monday evening last week, just to improve our basic services. We charge those professional services because, you know, this service is not receiving state aid or funding coming in taxes. So it's a way of getting revenue in school.
And drug awareness, I'd like to say to you.
Drug awareness, also had a meeting back on January 5th. Right now, they're aiming to start a speaker, local speakers program, either at the youth center or at the concealing house. The community, you know, the current agenda is still doing, including, as we, in America.
Very good. Charlie, anything for me to mark or what?
No, I didn't know. I just read this, so I guess they have. Could someone please, from the administration, send me the special one A B?
Sure.
You like the dog?
Okay. Did you see who they are?
I suggest just to run up for the next meeting. We should have it all in there, basically.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Karen, Cedar Hill?
No.
Okay, Milldale, Charlie? Joe? Uh, Joe, anything about it?
Yes, they had their January 15th meeting last Wednesday as well. Um, we just went over all their, all programs and their success. They have a whole bunch of spin programs as well.
Maybe? Okay, John, anything for Moisey?
Uh, similarly, they had their HSA meeting last, was it Wednesday, was it? They even overhauled things, helping financials. They had their, then the diamonds fundraiser, which raised over $50,000. The HSA, they had another fundraiser with a routine of $1,500. They've got a lot of good things going on. They've got a porn theater night, they're playing on pool performance, April 26. There's a TMB way in the dance, there's a more, we have a night fun for all the kids going on in February. They're proud of the, they're going to go to the bad guy.
Sounds good. Okay, one more.
And PTAM on January 10th, discuss a few things just to make sure. Coordination fundraiser, welfare, all of that. Coronation fundraiser, both there, always a cake, family bowling, a solemn game, and discussing the teacher specials.
The board's in shell solemn game. Christine, anything to Mozzar?
So, number four, I believe their next meeting is March 20.
High school, that court?
Michelle's coming too.
Michelle?
Mike and I have a meeting on January 9. Mr. Sandford came with good update on the upcoming revised midterm schedule and how that's going to work. It was very informative. Teachers, as always, gave great presentations about what's going on in the classrooms. And from a PTC perspective, encourage everyone who's on the exam already to join the PTC member and look forward to a lot of that spring events, and the PTC will be responsible.
Thank you. Okay, now it is time to call for participation. Anyone from the audience wishing to speak, they do so, please come up. On agenda items, agenda items.
Real quick question about the Democratic study.
Yeah, name and address?
Director Scott Rial, Sixty Road, Sockasum, Arizona. MTHS High School history teacher, and MTA president. Will the presentation tonight, the Democratic study presentation, be posted to the district website? Either in addition to or in place of the previous one? Great. Any idea just approximately when you think that post might be?
Tomorrow.
Sorry, tomorrow, all right. Oh, fabulous, thank you so much. Just not breaking the microphone.
Okay, now on to the dissent resolution for items I through O. And?
No.
Karen?
Any questions on the minutes? Section J, K, facilities. Section L, personnel. And M, curriculum. Are there any questions on the curriculum? There are three curriculum that need to be approved tonight? Anyone have any questions on this? Okay, and then M. Okay, we have the. Uh, no questions, okay, I guess, oh, hold on.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mr. Doctor?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanna?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrosino?
Yes.
Mr. Rapidport?
I understand, I'm in it from January 3rd, and it's going to be.
Ms. Duckman?
Yes.
Dr. O'Driscoll?
Yes. Okay, there is no closed session after this. Section Q, old business?
Just to announce that Mike Maugh and Christine and I had the pleasure of attending that the young man, Christopher, who's here tonight, is at Porter Warner on Sunday, January 8. And the next time an invitation comes along, if you have a chance to go, try and make it. It's really a very special event. And on this past Sunday, January 15th, I had the pleasure of speaking at the Chinese School New Year Celebration. This is the year of the rabbit, which is a year, and rabbit signifies peace, serenity, and prosperity. And so I think we all hope for peace, serenity, and peace, and peace and peace.
General War Collins, new business, Charlie?
Yeah, I went, I attended the governance for training on January 12th, the seventh line tonight. It was very worthwhile, everybody going on by yourself, they're sitting there for two hours. They have a turn for the school boards, two more required through cases on HIV, Tangerine, UNA. Nice Alamo presentation, it was over 100 people there. And I noticed five, two people have to get their, I know the few people who were just elected. Everybody else is a first year. But I would suggest, I know they're running a few more, you got the notice from the school board. It's a great way to get your credits, and so you don't have to sit there all by yourself, very interested in your presentation. It's a good last job. You take that back, just count to it.
You know who it was, Charlie? You know who it was?
It was a woman.
Woman.
Okay, I'll make sure that the association gets. No, she was, she was.
The attorney, the attorney. He gets what he's getting.
I forgot, but she was excellent.
No, it's, but.
Oh, did she?
But it, but, but the workshops are so great online because you can, even if something, you're interested, or talking something, or talking about something, they have some type of workshop. So it's worth it, even if you can only sit on the 45 minutes, you do learn something. Even if, I mean, I took a couple of courses twice, just to, you know, understand something. So I would encourage everyone to do that, even if you've been on the board a long time. It really helps, helps you understand certain policies and procedures.
Yeah, and you know, more training, we go to the more effective, become as a board member. And effective board members make effective boards, and effective boards absolutely positively impact student achievement. So again, it's not just the personal growth, but it helps us as a board, and it helps the school district as a whole. And also, more training, you actually get some certifications. And if you're into that, you can become a certified board member, a certified board member, master board member, which I think Charlie, you're a master board member, as well as certified board leader. I mean, it's a title, as long as it is, but it's pride.
Well, still not felt this time.
I think I'm on the agenda.
Nobody asked me, what do you like? People sign me to all these commitments, you know, just me.
Well, Karen, you've done a good job giving us that training that added over the past years. Hopefully, we'll continue to do that, because it has made us a good board. And I think as Arthur Hart indicated, people like Montpel, they want to come here. Schools are good, the board runs well, and schools are running quite well. And a lot, a lot has to do with training every city. So.
I would suggest our business in New York should make the presentation to them, like, so we can show. I'm going to go with seconds.
Okay, now, okay, public participation, any item that you feel like talking about? Nothing, I see no one. Most of the jury?
So excited.
There we go. Good night, everyone.